May I have your attention, please? The hour is here at seven o'clock that we are to start. We're going to allow the council, the mayor, lead us in the direction that they want to. My understanding is after the prayer and after the Pledge of Allegiance, there's one thing they want to present, and then it will be turned over to me.
If everyone will rise for the prayer, please.
Father God, we come now to say thank you. We thank you for the blessings of this day. And God, as we gather now, we ask for your presence in your spirit to be in the midst of us. God, we ask you to season our speech as we go through this meeting. We ask you to give us clarity. Give us that we may speak to one another cordially. God, we thank you for the blessings of just being able to gather. Let this be the first of many gatherings that we may work with one accord that all people will feel as though they are part of this community. We thank you for council being here, and we once again ask for your presence in your spirit. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. There's a flag back. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First off, I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight to the
There's a pad over there. Put your name on it. If you have questions, fill the index on the table.
... 23, 2022. Welcome to the George Good Fellowship Hall. We appreciate you and everyone having us here tonight. With that being said, I'd like to open the meeting of August 23, 2020, call meeting order. I would like to announce that the meeting is being recorded for town purposes or notes and minutes. I would like to make sure everybody knows that part. We will...Pastor Baker, thank you for having us. And we'll go on to your part of discussion now. And after that, we'll have a town manager update and council comments at the end.
Oh, okay. I thought you
Yeah, I was gonna do it another way, but we usually do it like his name or use changing.
Okay, all right.
I will turn it over to Pastor Baker for discussion part.
All right, let's lay some ground rules to begin with. We're going as now, we gather, we asked council to come here that we as a community may ask questions of them. We may present our concerns to the council and hopefully now have an understanding that we may not get all of the answers that you're looking for. But I also want to make sure that we speak cordial to one another. There will be no bashing of either in the gathering or to the council during this time of gathering. If you have concerns, we did ask for those who may not feel comfortable in standing to write out your concerns, and I will read them. I have some here before council for them to answer. We're looking toward having, this is the beginning of perhaps some other meetings that unity may be developed between the council and with the community of Clifton Forge. All right, now, that being said, I do have some questions already that I would like to present to the council. If there are any others, if you get them to Evelyn Cooper, that she can get them over to me if you have any written out. Okay. To the council, this comes from Sherri Peters, 1510 Farley Place, Clifton Forge, in City Limits. She says she pays taxes both to Clifton Forge and Allegheny. Says that the, she's been told that the road is private, not up to code by the developer. She wants to know where are the papers signed off or offed of by the code enforcer? And why does Clifton Forge not have any records of this road here?
You want anyone else to answer or all five?
Well, whoever has the answer.
If anybody knows the answer to that very specific question.
I can speak to part of it. I can't answer all of it because obviously this happened many, many years ago. You've told yourself, you've lived there quite some time. It was a private development. If you look on Allegheny County backing system and tax records, the roadway into that property is a private roadway. It is a responsibility of the people that own that roadway to maintain that roadway. And it is also unfortunate for the residents of it there. The utilities that are located in that roadway are also private utilities. And we had some issues back over there last December, and we got in touch with the property owners. And it was a gentleman, a gentleman that passed away, his name was Sheeks. His partner is still here, lives in Northern Virginia, or central of Allegheny, Northern Virginia. He himself is in his eighties, but he has transferred all of that into his name and has not entertained any conversation about transferring it out of his name or into any other person's name or had any communication with the town about making changes in ownership of that property.
You said you have made, you have contacted about possibly changing?
We had had conversation with him back in December, and Mr. Peters was in my office for the first time, and we talked about it. And we had him, he came down here. He actually got the sewer problems and the water problems that they were experiencing at that time fixed. He hired a contractor to do that. The town, the police cannot or do not go on private property to excavate and do the work. Jared, you can probably touch base on that a little bit better. But that is a roadway that is identified as a, a concern on both sides, the property owners and the town. But as it is right now, it is still maintained as a private roadway, privately owned property.
Okay, let me ask you this question. Is this the, the person that you talked to, are they the last part of the group that developed that?
They have children, they have heirs, but they are the last surviving part of the group that developed that property, yes. And I think they still have a lot, or maybe two, that's undeveloped on that roadway also.
Well, just for my own clarification, could you explain to me how she's paying taxes both in Clifton Forge and Allegheny County?
Because everybody who lives in Clifton Forge pays county taxes and town taxes. Everybody who lives in Clifton Forge pays town taxes and county taxes.
We are, we are a town inside of the county limits, and being so, we pay both taxes. Oregon pays two taxes.
Okay.
And we get services from the county and the town.
Okay. So in other words, there's nothing that can be done for her or the others that live on that other than trying to bring this gentleman back to the table, perhaps even with his heirs?
Well, and Josh, I'm trying to, Jared, I'm not even gonna say. I can work with Chuck. How it's normally done when these developments are done, the developer, once everything's built out, they'll dedicate the utilities and the rights of way to the town or the county, whatever municipality they're in, just because the developer doesn't want to have to deal with it. I don't know when this was actually put in, but years ago.
That was my next question.
So I'm not sure why that actual dedication never took place. But I can certainly, it's never, in my experience, hasn't come up where you could try to force that dedication. But there might be some mechanism where, you know, a majority of the landowners, the property owners on that street make a request, sort of force the developer to dedicate it. I think that'd be one potential solution if they're not willing to do it by agreement.
Jared, about what I had one more conversation. Well, if the offer was made that if they would bring the utilities that are in that roadway that they own, an option to code, to be adequate for the residents of the residential properties that are there, we would set out an entertainment and an option to take control of the property.
Okay, is that taking place with you or the code enforcer?
That would be taking place with Mr. Jenkins and myself.
Okay, so that's all you can give Ms. Peters and those that live on that road?
Chuck, I have a question. Do we scrape that in winter for snow?
I can add that.
What'd you say, sis?
They can not scrape.
They do not scrape?
And that's typical for private roadways, is no trash pickup, no snow removal. So not unusual for that to be the situation.
So Mr. Jenkins, are you saying that you and Mr. Unruh, y'all can start work, trying to work on a resolution to this?
Yeah, for sure. And ideally it'd be by agreement with the person Mr. Unruh has talked to. But if not, I'll look and see if there's a way to try to push the issue and force his hand so the town can take perhaps more of a proactive role.
Okay. If you would keep myself and Ms. Peters abreast of that, I mean, a lot of times we say what we're going to do or what we can do, but it seems like it's another 20 years before. So we pray that it doesn't take that.
Understood.
I have a question here concerning the Jefferson High School. Have the building been sold? If so, to who? Is the building on the historical register?
Okay. And I've recorded since May, pretty much every month, the building has not been sold. There is no definite plans at this point to sell the building. As I shared with you earlier, Pastor Baker, there's very clearly an outline of community involvement schedules and dates to be involved in the development of that property. I shared this with some of the neighbors that live next to the building. We started, I met with Virginia housing representatives at the Jefferson School Building in January of this year. Started the process of applying for a community involved development grant to fund community involvement and input in the development of that property. We were awarded that grant in June of this year. It's a $50,000 grant. Sole purpose of that, and I'll just read to you some of the things that were included in the grant package and also the schedule that had been provided previously.
Mr. Unruh, if I can ask you one thing as you get ready to do that, can you explain it to us in layman terms that we may be able to understand it?
Well, I mean, they gave us money to ask your opinion on how you want the school to be developed. I mean, that's the whole gist of it. They gave us $50,000 to fund a developer to come in and meet with stakeholders and individuals and groups in the community to have your input on what you would like to see happen with that building. Let me, is that sufficient, Pastor?
Does everyone understand what's just been said? Well, you go ahead and read what you, do read what you have, then if there's any other questions.
The following individuals have been identified participating in the planning effort. Obviously, town council members, Jefferson School alumni groups, members of the Board for the Washington Park Committee, Director of the Trails Committee, Clifton Forge Main Street, the Clifton Forge Architectural Review Board, neighbors including Main Street Baptist Church, First Baptist Church, the Clifton Forge Food Pantry, and houses adjacent to the school. Also representatives from Allegheny County. Who also work with media outlets, including the Allegheny Journal, Virginia Review, the local radio, local arts groups, including the Clifton Forge School of the Arts, Allegheny Island Arts and Crafts Center, Historic Asylum Theater, Laura Dance, and San Antonio Heritage Center. The project site is the Jefferson School Building. It's property which is located at the intersection of Church Street and A Street in town of Clifton Forge. Currently, the Jefferson School Building is not utilized and has been vacant for a number of years. Rear of the property is host to the Clifton Forge Area Food Pantry, which utilizes the cottages behind the school. Then what I wanted to say to describe the deed for the proposed grant. Jefferson School, also known as the East Complimentary School, is a historic school building in Clifton Forge, Virginia. The school was completed in 1926 and expanded in 1952 and provide the primary and secondary education for African-American students in the Clifton Forge community. From 1926 to 1965, desegregation took effect. The school was central to Clifton Forge and Black community for nearly 40 years. After 1965, the school remained open until the early 2000s. Building was added to the National Registry of Historic Places in 2010. Since the building was on the National Registry, development can potentially utilize historic tax credits due at the property. Given the building's rich history, we would like a plan in place that ensures the history of the building is both preserved and celebrated, and any future plans for the building are supported by community stakeholders, including alumni of the Jefferson School. Town of Clifton Forge, which currently owns the property, would like the building to be predeveloped. If I could go ahead, if I could, I'm not taking too much time.
No, okay.
I would like to just... Then it goes on, and it says, "How will the organization ensure input and engagement from the diverse local stakeholders?" Goal of public encouragement or engagement for this project will be to engage with various groups, both the core and jury design. We want these groups to help inform the designers from the beginning, to help ensure that we will have the most community support as possible. Community engagement will help to ensure the design and strategies are feasible within the parameters of the town's needs and desires. We will take a hybrid approach for public engagement, including both direct engagement via one-on-one meetings and public meetings, and a more passive approach through online engagement. This will provide multiple opportunities for engagement based on the needs. And then it goes on to say that I met with them in January, county council voted unanimously for the support of the Suda's grant, and town council and Allegheny Foundation, I call it, will develop with the community of this, of stakeholders and beaters in the community. And then the last thing I want to share off of this is, this planning project has the full support of the town council. Town would like to borrow excitement from the community for this project and recruit potential developers to aid the project to the next level after this planning endeavor is complete. They went ahead and presented a preliminary schedule of events that they think will take possibly seven months from start to finish. Task two, background research. Identify any site concerns and design parameters, evaluate zoning, collect contact information for the stakeholders. Task number three, round number one of public engagement in person. Make first contact with identified stakeholders and post one to two public meetings, one-on-one meetings and phone calls at a meeting. Aim of this task will be to identify desires with Jefferson School design. Collect emails and other contact with all stakeholders. Task number four, concept development. Develop schematic plans for the study site. This task will include analyzing the condition of the cottage on the rear of the property and explore methods and possible costs of converting these into future use. Assess community programs to make a suitable use for the open gymnasium space. Explore layouts for possible apartments in the building. Are assessed both onsite and offsite party. Task number five, round two of public engagement. Circle back the stakeholder groups from task three and collect feedback on the design concepts that have been presented. Task four, design iteration. Based on community feedback, refine the designs. And task number seven, plan use analysis based on the final design. Assess if this is earning as successful or if changes are necessary. So as you can see, it's pretty well emphasized that there have been no decisions made on the future of that building, other than we all want to see it continue to sit there and decay and deteriorate and not be preserved in a dignified manner that it deserves. And we want to do this, and we want to do this from day one, with involvement from the community, from all aspects of the community, but most especially the community that the school sets right in the middle of. And that's where it's going to have the largest impact on people's lives, if I can that community. So in answer to the question directly, no, sir, the school has not been sold, is not even being negotiated at this point in a contract to say there was any happening, but it is, and the project has gone through this procedure and process of public displan to assess what the community would like to see happen with that property.
Okay. There's, well, the other question that's here, but I wanted to ask something because I noticed that that particular email was sent to you on May the 4th, 2022. We're in August now.
Yes, sir.
Where are you as far as this, what phase are you in?
We have just been awarded the grant in July of this year. I met with Maria Saxton, who is the person at Hill Studios who is helping us with this. We have developed an RFQ, which is a Request for Qualifications for a proprietary developers to come into the community and meet with the community and process through this procedure.
Okay, question?
The last meeting, and I asked the question, when were those, when are those, when were those mugs supposed to move off that lot? Because a lot of things with the people looking at that, looking at that property and all those mugs that they have, the school has taken away of the look of the school. It's congested right, right there, Paul? And it was supposed to be taken. You said you was gonna look it up in your records and tell us when those mugs were supposed to be removed from that school, when it was stated in your records that those mugs were supposed to be moved, removed after the school is not being used again.
Yes, and I have looked, and I'm still looking, but you have to understand that when we don't have specific dates to go by, we have to research back through all of the dates. So it's quite kind of insane. I cannot answer the question to you at this time, just like I could at a previous meeting. When those mugs are off, it's supposed to be removed. Somebody who's been on council hall or that had been here might be able to address that, but I cannot
I saw the mayor raise his hand.
Well, and I've worked there for two or three years, you know, for a school assistant when I was cutting 4G school. And I went to that school. And I remember back, the plan was when they put them in there, you know, they were temporary, as everybody knows. And I think the plan was three to four years, and then they would do something to the school, move them out and get them, do away with them. But whatever the school did, they never, they never cut, went through with it. So, I mean, they were stuck there. And then after we, the school went to the new middle school, all the, all the school property when the school closes, goes back to the locality. So that went back to us.
Okay, because it was supposed to be, then, then it wasn't moving anymore, that they were to be, for people to battle.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, is the building on the historic register?
Yes, and that is on historic registry.
You said it is?
It is not one of a group, I mean, it's in the historic overlay, but it is itself identified on both the state and national historic landmark registry as a historic building.
Is there a plaque going to be put there as recognition of that?
I'm sure it will be.
Is anybody looking into getting that plaque?
Not at this time. We're working on development of the property.
And I met one time with the guy who was looking at it, me and Chuck and him and some other, I think it was architects, one of them.
No, it's developers.
Developers. And we went through the building, and being honest and everything, that is a town building. It is awful looking. It's dilapidated, it's gonna fall, and sooner or later it's gonna be like the new old high school. I call it a high school, middle school. It's gonna come down. And I think we should be proud if somebody wants it and take it to, and fix it up in the right direction. And Mr. Hill is going to do, I think, the right direction. When he met with us, he was in the gym, he stated some of the background of it. And, you know, since I've been here longer than most people, so I gave him some background of old schools, some things that needed, and what was used for it older. One of his things was fixing up a hall and representing being the old Jeter School. And he, Jefferson, I'm sorry. And he had nothing but the community, community, community. But he said community more than he did anything. And, you know, what other thing was, he asked Chuck, "What can I do with this to help the community and the area? What specifically do you need?" Chuck said one thing was, you know, going, doing things for this area here where it sits. One thing was for the elderly, one thing was for the kids, and the reestating its old history. And Mr. Hill was very happy with all that. So I think he will put that into the architect.
Well, I want to suggest to council that you definitely have public input since it's been suggested that it possibly turn into, be turned into residential units, and especially to talk to the community, because from what I see, there's no parking. But I'm also concerned when you start doing this, is there going to be public domain? That you're going to just take houses, and people need to know what your plans are concerning that to accomplish the end? So I'm asking council to continue, at least have an open dialogue with the community as you go along with the, doing whatever you're going to do with the grant money that's been presented. Okay, now
Can I say something?
Yes.
This $50,000 is just to see in the community what we can do to school and how we're gonna do it, and everybody's input. It seems like a lot of money.
No, it's not a lot of money. No, no, no. None of us are thinking that $50,000 is a lot of money.
One hour, one hour, my people understand that. That is not to fix it. None of us is gonna fix it. It's to see what we can, architects, what we can do to the school. When Rosalyn was trying, Thomas was trying to fix that school up, I gave her a price, $100,000 just on the road. And that's the amount of money it's gonna take to fix this school up. Tremendous amount of money. And these people here are gonna help us get grants, government grants, and funding that you, I think it would have took for them to sign here, $8 million? $8 million in 10 years to do it. It's something that's not gonna happen overnight. You know, and don't get frustrated, it doesn't happen overnight, it's gonna happen, but it's gonna take time, it's gonna take a lot of work, and a lot of, a lot of help, a lot of help, and a lot of money, a lot of help, a lot of patience. It isn't gonna happen overnight.
I understand that, and I think we understand. But what I'm asking
A lot of money, a lot of help, a lot of patience. It isn't going to happen overnight.
I understand that and I think we understand, but what I, what I'm asking is that keeping the community in, in the know and especially when you start, you know, as you start looking at these things, getting, letting the community know and having, letting, having the community give their input.
That's the sole purpose of this grant.
Sole purpose of this grant. Step three. Sole purpose of three, you're in.
Since you got it in July, do you have an idea when you're going to start working on your task?
As I, as I just said today, we have contracted to have the RFQ Request for Qualifications for the developers to submit their interest and then once that has been done and qualified developer has been selected, then the task will start and the community will be reached out to both individually and publicly. And again, you know, you keep saying keep the community involved, Pastor Baker, I don't be as honest with you like anybody. I don't know how we can do anymore to get the community involved other than to commit that is our sole purpose and it's a whole endeavor that we're working for right now is we want the community involved. We want the school to be preserved and, and to a dignified manner and not just sit there and deteriorate until it is too far gone to be of any positive use for anybody. But it has to be done in a manner that supports the community. And that's what we said from day one.
Well, let me say this, this is a good beginning for our community and council. Now, this can be the first of several meetings because we know it's not going to take over, it's not going to happen overnight.
Do you know the deadline for the responses on that RFQs?
Now, we just contracted with her today here to, she'll have it to me by Friday and they usually run for a couple of weeks, a couple of months?
Usually, usually 30 days. So hopefully by the first of October, we'll be done.
Ideally, we would like to start having these meetings and have these tasks through the winter months. So hopefully with spring breaks next year, we can be coming back with some development plans for review by the community and then folks involved in the community and then move into a planning phase for grant application and redevelopment of the property.
Okay.